They finished the chip sealing and stuff and he'll report on all that, but other than that, everything's going like it should.
Oliver will be in today, otherwise everything else is.
Okay, so we do have one guest, so Loretta will ask you to just come up here and introduce yourself and go ahead and address the commission in regards to your position.
Well, I have several things I'm going to say.
Please introduce yourself.
I'm Loretta Shumway and I'm from Harvard. And I wrote each of you yesterday. I haven't heard back as of last night from any of you. Dennis Doctor wrote my husband back. We used the same email and so, but I haven't heard from that either. So I am going to read this what I wrote. Dear Chairman and Commissioners, I am writing as a Wells County citizen to have my voice in the elections of Wells County. I'm saying that I'd appreciate being able to personally vote on an election ballot for the county recorder's office position and any other positions that come available. I am also asking that you consider positions to be filled to always be electable and are on our voting ballots at the proper time they need to be for the public voters to voice their opinions. Our state of North Dakota's constitution states the laws can't be changed or decisions made that would diminish the voice of the people. I won't give up my right to have a voice by having a group appoint a person to a position who thinks they know my voice. I served three and a half years on a planning zoning commission in Alaska. Many people are capable of being able to serve in capacities you may not be aware of. Give those who wish to do so a chance by allowing them their voice. I look forward to having my voice heard by electing my own choice for the county recorder's office position among all candidate names which have been presented to be printed on the ballot for the November election. Thank you for your media attention to this matter sincerely, Loretta Shumway. And then, I have a couple of things to say. If people are appointed, is it not true that they're not required to live in Wells County? If they're appointed to these positions that come around here? Like the recorder's office such as, you know, do they need to live in our county?
They don't have to be in the county to apply, but once they, if they're appointed, then we.
Then they have to be in the.
They're expected.
Okay, okay. Okay, another thing that I noticed, because I have come to a couple of the meetings that were the zoning meetings and because I was on a planning and zoning commission that was combined where I lived, and so this is why I have these questions. Boone and Stan are both in the zoning and the planning commissions and I, on the committees. And when I came to the zoning meetings, I came to two of them, and they were listening to the stuff about the windmills and when they listened to the stuff about the windmills, they, the group was to agree or disagree or whatever they did, they voted and had a recommendation that went to the planning commission then. Well, my, my opinion is, is if they're on the zoning committee and they have whatever they decide in the zoning committee, they take that back to the other one and then they vote on that there and I don't think that's right. I think that they should be separated or have a, I don't know if they have to, you know, excuse themselves from the vote if that happens? And even if it's able to be done, I don't think it's ethical. That's my opinion. And there have been two positions that have already been appointed in this Wells County that have not been voted upon. So if one person is appointed to two positions, do they get paid for the total of the two positions? Like we have somebody right now in two positions, are they getting paid for each of those positions or is it just combined when they're in, when they're?
With them.
You, give us an example of that.
I do not have two positions.
You do not have two positions. The treasury and there's another one, so that's what I was.
None of those are dual.
They're not dual.
All single.
Okay, and I know you guys are not paid positions and so it doesn't work with that with it, but I want to know, is there a rule for the zoning and the planning committee people, why they're on both, on the both committees? That's what I want to know, how they can be that.
I'd say singular committee.
Are you talking about commission and zoning?
Yes.
Typically, we do that. Dennis Doctor is on the health board, Boone is on the weed board, he is on social services.
So you refuse yourself when it comes time to vote if you have something from one that you go to the other one off? Do you refuse yourself from the voting on that matter?
That is actually purposely duplicitous so that they have insight over the things that they are in charge of.
Just the opposite. Those individuals, when we come to a meeting like this, you can't call them an expert, but they're the ones who are in tune with what, we'll use the weed board and Boone going to a weed board meeting and he would probably at times recommend something that the weed board should do because he's been at those meetings where the rest of us haven't. So in turn, it's just the opposite. Those individuals who represent Dennis, health board for example, would be the ones that might initiate a vote because of the recommendation that came from that particular subcommittee.
Well, I understand that, but when he is in that other meeting, does he also vote or does he just recommend it and then the rest of the people vote? That was what my question was.
You mean when you're at the weed board meeting?
Like if he comes to the weed board meeting and then comes and says something to, like you guys in sport, if there's something to vote on, he has already made up his decision of what he's going to do and if he recommends that, then that is, is, I don't know.
No, he's representing the weed board. He doesn't necessarily, you know, in the meantime, there may be, in the case of, I know where you're going with this, in the case of our first zoning board, we didn't get all the information on the wind tower situation.
No, I went to two meetings because you had a hard time with the first.
Well, it was, it wasn't representing Wells County. It was, it was all Eddie County stuff, so we didn't get, so in turn, that's why it's only a recommendation and a recommendation all the time, and you'd like to hope so, but the recommendation all the time isn't locked in stone. It's this group that discusses it. Do we have more information? Do we need to table it and do we need to look at it further? It's, it's not quite as cut and dry unfortunately as we like it sometimes.
That's the commission's connection with those committees is that's our connection and their recommendation. We get the final say. They come back and recommend something, we don't agree, we don't vote on it that way.
It showed in the budget there, whether weed board gets so many mills and we gotta be within that money.
Well, I understand that. I just didn't know if, I know that they make a recommendation, but I didn't know if they refuse themselves if there is a vote, that they do not vote.
We don't.
You do not.
We don't.
Okay, that's what I wanted. Thank you, that's all I asked.
As far as your email, I never did get that one.
I do neither.
I wrote it to all of you together and it's on ours that we sent it. So I, that's why I brought this.
That's under Kevin.
I got.
I got Kevin.
They both are on his, have his name, but my name was on mine because we use the same email, because I am not an emailer. So, anyways.
The one you read, I did not get.
Okay, I didn't think that you had, so that's why I brought it.
No, I didn't either. I got Kevin's.
Yes.
This morning.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have any other?
Nope.
Other comments? Nope, no other public comments.
Chris. Good morning.
Morning, Chris.
Sorry you got here.
What's new with you?
Oh, not a lot.
That's a good thing. Give me one.
We hired, uh, new guy filled the, all the deputy positions are filled. His name is Timothy Neuer. He was out late, late last night with another deputy. They were calling me and some other things, so I'm kind of tired today too, but that's all right. The vehicle is up and going, I don't know if you have seen it.
Those people asking you, where did that come from? I said it's been in the shed for a while, it just got out and it's gone.
I saw it at Duck Fest.
Pretty slick.
Right off the.
It looks pretty nice.
Yeah, right off the get go.
I changed the graphics, I'm changing them on all the cars to match that one. It's not as expensive. It's going to be just a simple design. It says sheriff across the car, Falls County underneath. The cars are black, so the graphics will be white.
Cool.
And I'm putting them on mine as well, but my graphics will be black and they'll shine at night. It will be like.
Reflector.
Yes, it will be really nice, all the cars will be done.
Style them.
Uh, it's not like over extravagant though, it's, the badge is on there. Each of the white graphics also shine, they are all reflected. So that's about all I got, if you guys have any questions.
Who's driving the car then? Is that new guy?
That's the new guy. I seen him yesterday when I was at the courthouse, he was there.
He's the one who fits in at the best.
Are you? Did you move the motorcycle?
I haven't yet, but I'm going to.
In a year?
No.
Because this thing has been prolonged too long.
Absolutely.
And it needs to get moved to county property or wherever it needs to go.
Absolutely, but we can talk about that. Where should I keep it?
Because it's a motorcycle, I suspect we could get it into this garage over here if that's possible.
Or.
If it was a car, we probably couldn't fit it.
If there's a corner in the state shed out there where the chemical is at, because the chemical takes the room up and there might be a little corner in the state shed.
We're renting that state shed.
I understand that, but it's, it's a piece of evidence.
So that's still evidence then?
It still is evidence.
That makes a difference.
There was the.
Nobody's in there, nobody goes in the state shed.
I mean.
They take the truck in and out.
Who all has access to the garage? It would take some strength obviously to do this, but I suspect you could put it in one of those rooms in the basement of the courthouse if you had to. Get around.
Get a nice cover and cover it and nobody will touch it.
That's what I was going to say, put it in the shed and tarp it over.
Yeah, put a nice cover on it and you're good.
Well, the easier solution than where the outsider's looking in is, was this going to go on for a long time?
Yeah, that's my question.
This investigation thing, maybe you don't know.
I, I can't get into the exact details of it, but.
No, I don't want to know.
I can tell you that it's not over. It's still actively being worked and there may be tarp is coming.
It may be five years yet.
It, it's one of those that never goes away. It's not bad.
Well, they need to get it unloaded for sure, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Frank, is there any possible way they could take this motorcycle?
Is there a way we can have?
Out in that.
Like a storage unit built for bigger property like that? That, it doesn't have to be heated necessarily, but that only I have access to.
Does it just have to be indoors?
Yeah.
No, but like you said, people can't have access to it.
If they covered it up with a tarp in a corner out there.
You can buy those things that we see on freight trains, containers, containers or something like that.
Something like that would work, right?
Yeah, actually that, that would actually work really good.
If they bought a container?
Yeah, you can get them for like three, four grand, you can lock it up, push a couple motorcycles, some evidence in there and lock it up and you guys have the only key.
We can put that in, what do you call that, the bullpen over there?
Yeah, we took all the fencing down and cleaned up the bullpen, but there's, you know, there's, there's cars over there. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a big deal at all to lock one of those there. They make good storage units and they're not that hard to, to find.
Right.
You know, you can get them as long as like 40 feet.
Boone, I'll get it moved this week.
Well, whatever.
But, and I'll find a tarp.
I mean, if. The only other thing is we put it in the, in the Bob building, cover it with the tarp and put police tape around it and, you know, I mean, there's really, it would, honestly in Fesden, it's just me right now. So, I mean, if, if it's, if it's touched, you know who to blame.
Well, I mean, I just.
Kind of opening yourself up.
No, but I mean, the storage, the storage container would work the best.
You see Brett driving it on Main Street in Fesden.
I offered a store because it's not very.
And the reason I suggest this is because future of this may happen again.
Right, yeah.
And then.
We could get them a storage container because this will happen.
We're not going to get storage fees like this.
If they bought the storage container already, what it costs.
It costs.
You know, this may not happen again for a year or two, but yeah, a storage container sounds like a good idea.
Well, I mean, we don't, we fill it half up already because we have another motorcycle that's over there in our shed.
Yeah.
We got a four wheeler.
Yeah.
You know, so stuff that I move around, that we move around, that can be touched, can all go into a storage container.
I agree.
Benny's sale is his fault, they got a container down there.
Where?
But it's integrity and steel wire. They got four of them there, I just seen the other day.
Sales coming up on the 15th.
Well, yeah, they're going to have a sale here in October.
October 15th, there's a sale coming there.
Why don't you see if you can get it, tarp it up this week and then get the storage.
I'll get it done this week before the weekend.
Excellent. Anything else for Chris?
I do have a question. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Nine, you, you get gas drive offs a lot?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, nine dropped a year? I mean, are those people just not thinking or is it?
Sometimes it's.
Real theft.
They stick their card in, it doesn't work.
Yep.
They think it works and then they drive away.
It's happened to me. You run your cars through.
It's trying to find their names and numbers and track them down.
You, you run your car through.
Minot or Bismarck and trying to find their phone numbers and track, that takes a lot of time, because all you have is a vehicle and sometimes you don't get the plate on the video and.
Right.
I bet half the time it's just an honest mistake, isn't it?
Yes, sometimes not. Actually, I have one that I'm working on that, I don't think yet.
No, there was one spot where it wasn't and it was a big dollar model, it was diesel fuel. You know, and out of state.
I have a question for you, Chris. It's good to see that you've got your deputy hired, so you got a full outfit and it appears your, your communication is getting better, which I am glad to see. Could we get them deputies and yourselves to keep communicating with these trucks that seem to be driving too fast? Because, because here's the deal, these trucks that are driving fast on these roads, they're hammering these roads out and that ends up costing the taxpayers money fixing so if we could try to, try to take care of that speed factor on county roads, it would be wonderful. And I know in the past you've had, you've had limited time, but now that you've got full deputies, it would be nice to see the presence and I do know there's presence because I got phone calls. Boy, they're on the road, they caught me speeding. And I said, well, if you were speeding, that's what's going to happen. And so I, I know they're out there to a certain degree, but I would really encourage you to slow these load of trucks down because that's really what damages the road is speed and loads. If that's possible, I would really appreciate that.
I'll work on it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good belts.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. You guys had a great day. I got to go to Sheridan County now.
Oh, boy. Good luck with that.
Yeah. Chris, if you reach out, if you reach out to Weston and Jamestown, they may have those containers also.
West End?
Weston, Haydenford. And they would deliver it right on the spot.
I'll do that.
All right? They bring our metal container, they bring a new one down and take our full one back. So if they needed to bring this container down, they could take our full.
Sounds like a good solution.
You mean to buy one of them?
Yeah. The big thing is, is getting somebody to deliver it.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you got a chosen spot, you don't take much.
If you got a rollaway trailer, it's simple.
Yes, right, and Jamestown does that.
Yeah.
Is Oliver coming?
I hope so, but if not, we can do some of that other stuff. In the meantime. We're going to approve the budget, Doc. I have to tell you what to do.
He does, okay.
Does he deliver them?
That's the thing, you know, you almost got to have a trailer, a forklift or something, you know, but.
Sure, you guys could unload one, but.
You see them all over the internet.
Yeah.
Facebook, market book or market page.
Slide it off.
Yeah, do some of that bottom stuff, Doc. Boone, get on and get it, don't worry about it. It, it's, it's nothing.
Brett, I guess we'll wait for Oliver to do more stuff.
Yeah. Uh, Knife River did repair the end slope on that mile and a half yesterday. I knew they were coming because I signed a load pass form last week and I signed a load pass form this morning, they moved out. They hauled gravel and fill in and completely fixed the entire south shoulder of that highway to a four to one slope. I was out there a couple times or twice and I met with Jason out there. Jason's coming today, right?
Yeah.
So that, they already hauled the blade out, so that project I would guess will probably have to be approved and you guys probably, if you haven't already paid them, that, that project is complete now. They did fix that. Good news, it only took six months, but we got our drum in. I went and picked it up this morning for that broom, for that John Deere for telling the snow in the courthouse. So now we got all the parts, we can put it back together and, and bring that up here for snow removal, which we will now. I just picked it up this morning. The chip seal, I told Dennis a couple weeks ago that we weren't going to be able to do it, we had a breakdown with our chip spreader. I had canceled the oil and because we couldn't get a mechanic and we finally got a mechanic that actually came the next day, which surprised us all. $200 an hour for about six hours going through the wiring diagrams and everything on that chip spreader and about halfway through, he said, you guys got a 22 ton paperweight. He goes, we don't work on these computers, we don't reprogram them, you can't get parts, it's a computer problem. We felt it was a broken wire all the time, but I don't need to tell you unless you got the schematics to the wiring diagram, there is wires everywhere on this thing. Where do you find one broken wire? So we figured we were in deep trouble, so we asked him if he could kind of fury rig it a little bit to make it work for a couple days and he did and it worked. And as he was tucking wires away so we could use it, he found a broken wire. So I was able to get most of the oil back and we chip sealed last week. The chip spreader worked like it was a 2025 instead of a 95 and so we did get our chip seal almost completely completed. There's two miles that we didn't get and that had nothing to do with us, it's just that it's late in the year and I'd already canceled the oil. I actually had a load of oil come from Nebraska just to get what we could get done. And so the lines will be painted on that highway hopefully by the end of the week. Just a little bit more brooming, we got the equipment back and the chip seal went good. Okay? Jeff is now done. He worked all summer, you know, not always 40 hours a week. His truck is ready to go, I'll take that over to Sykeston and when it snows, Jeff will help us out. We'll get Huey's truck ready, put that in the shed and Huey will help us out and those will be our two plow truck drivers, you guys know all about that. The blade guys will, are, were not blading last week because they were chip sealing. They will all now go until freeze up. I don't need them anymore, so we had to take them off for a week. So the blades will be operating mainly on main roads, they'll be touching a few secondaries up if need be, but they'll be working the main roads, getting rid of the last of the windrow and prepping the roads for freeze up into the winter. I'll be mowing ditches. I started last week, so it's a pretty tough job driving that nice John Deere tractor, but somebody's got to do it, so I'll do it. So you'll see that, you'll see me mowing ditches, making two passes with our Batwing. Lot of the guys have done a good job, but there are a few that haven't, so we're going to get them mowed in October. Other than that, kind of business as usual. What do you guys got for me? Bridge inspectors were here. They were here the last week of September and the first week of October. They inspected the newest railroad bridge over by Wellsburg in April and they did 29 more last week. They do them every two years, same inspectors that we've had the last six years now. So we'll find out. Last year or two, a couple of years ago, we found out at the end of October. We ain't going to find out now till next year because they got to put all their reports together, then they got to submit them to DOT. So, you know, there was 29 bridges that they had to inspect. I actually seen the inspectors going around to our bridges on the last two weeks, so we'll see how we did. Jason will fill you in on the flex funding for the bridge project today and talk to you about the Hamburg project as far as the, the two highway projects that we applied for, for flex funding. We won't know anything until at least January on that for O52 and County 1.
But we're in the, we're in the semis.
We're in the semis, yes. I did, as far, I spoke to Brian, Brian from KLJ last week, just to give you guys an idea, so that bridge project is going to go to bid like in April or March, February, March, April of next year. It is slated, the, the completion date is set for September 26th and there will be, we will have a big detour. The locals will go around on the gravel road, they'll know to do that. But the actual detour will be set up to detour over to Highway 30 from 15 to 30 to County 5 for the guys that aren't local. That project is slated to have that bridge closed for 120 days. That is with weather counted in. If we have good weather next summer, it's very likely that that bridge will only be closed for 90 days. But he set the completion date for the middle to end of September rather than the end of October because with soybean and corn harvest, by the time that harvest starts, we're hoping that bridge is opened up and, and good to go. We don't have the weed harvest like we used two years ago. Harvest is just starting now with soybeans and. So, so just to give you an idea, that was the guidelines that we set up for completion on September 26th and, you know, so when the bids are open for a four month project, they're going to have to start that project right after spring's work, right after, you know, they're going to have to start in June. So that, that road will be probably closed for three to four months.
That's starting next spring?
Yeah, next June.
That's a, that's a, that's going to happen.
That's going to happen. I mean, unless something would come up on the engineers portion of it, and I don't see that happening, I think they've covered, they've dotted their i's and crossed their t's. It goes to bid in the spring and it will be completed by September of next year. Other than that, like I said, it's business as usual. Oh, I got to get back to Dave Clough, but I wanted to get your opinion on this. So they were out there and they were taking parts of that big barn apart yesterday, robbing doors, stalls and I happened to be out there because I wanted to be out there, I stopped out there and I talked to the guy that was doing the work and I said, are you tearing this down? He says, I can. I said, he says, but I haven't been contacted. I reached out to Dave, but I, I haven't got, we haven't made communication yet. But when they get everything out of that building, it's going to be ready to come down. Now, have you guys heard, is the historical society going to hire somebody to take it down? Are they expecting the road department to take it down? And if so, if it is us, what would be the plan? I mean, I can knock it down in 20 minutes, I could probably knock it down with the county pickup and do a little severe, I mean, not much damage. To be honest with you, now that they took stalls and stuff. To be honest with you, now that they took stalls and stuff-